Nine, I mean, seven thirty-one, and this meeting is being recorded. Councilwoman Ferguson, would you mind giving the invocation, please?
Father, I thank you for another opportunity to, for us to meet, to do the business of the city. I ask that you will grace us with your presence, your wisdom, peace, and wise counsel. Let us accomplish everything that is on the agenda in an orderly and timely manner. Bless every citizen, participant, employee, elected official of the city of Glen Arden, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson. Now I'll take the roll call. Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Councilwoman Gleone.
Here.
Councilwoman Fareed.
Here.
Councilman Hairston.
Fred.
Councilman Herring.
Here.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Here.
And Councilwoman Curtis is here. We have seven, all seven councilmembers and attendants. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda? I'm a second.
Second.
Discussion? Councilwoman Gleone, I saw you unmute yourself.
I was just going to say that I do recall, I saw under topics of discussion, some staffing matters, so didn't know if that can go under the administrative section, but if no one can, no one sees that as anything, that's fine. I'm fine with moving forward.
It will, it'll go in conjunction, high level with the administrative reports. Any other discussion? Okay, well, with that, a vote to accept the agenda. Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gleone.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes.
Councilman Hairston.
Yes.
Councilman Herring.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Yeah.
And Councilman Curtis is a yes. Seven yeses. Agenda passes. Well, we will start this meeting off with first item on our agenda, a presentation on traffic calming measures. Councilwoman Fareed, are you ready?
Hi, yes, I guess you didn't get my email. The, um, person who was supposed to speak from, uh, Councilwoman Jolene Ivy's office is having a family emergency. She offered to do the presentation from the car, but I thought that would not be safe, so, um, we are going to reschedule that.
Thank you. So we will table the presentation on traffic calming measures. And so then we'll just move to the second item on our agenda, administrative reports. Mayor Cross.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilwoman Curtis, to the council, to the citizens. I will start this off in accordance with the agenda item. We'll start with the treasurer's report. We'll give you wave tops, and if there is more deep dive required, then each member is available for those questions. We had revenues and expenditures for the month ending in June twenty twenty-one, which had revenues of five million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The expenses of four million, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars, six hundred and forty-seven, um, were expended. The activities that resulted year-to-date, uh, total revenues did exceed the year-to-date total revenues by seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars, seven-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. Uh, as we are preparing ourselves for the audit that is coming, uh, we're also working forward in this September, uh, as we are looking at our property taxes that will then have received at six hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-two. Uh, we will have a total of received for one million, five hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and nine. So as we move forward, we'll be looking at our finance operations and what we've done from the months of July to August. Essentially, what we've done is bought up to date the disbursement of all that's due to our vendor invoices. Uh, we've also applied for and received our ARPA funds, and we are actively preparing a strategy to utilize those funds over the next, uh, four years. Uh, we have set the date for the FY twenty-one audit, and we are also making regular bank deposits and seeking, um, to actually reconcile our petty cash, and, uh, we have made all necessary entries for that. Relative to, um, uh, processing our payroll and identifying any, uh, related discrepancies, we're also working for our retirement accounts and bringing those accounts up to date. Essentially, uh, for our most recently departed, uh, chief, we're actually working for, uh, with, uh, Mutual of America to make sure that his family receives those funds as well. Moving forward, uh, from the treasurer's report, unless there are questions. Haven't heard none? We're moving.
One second, I saw Councilman Herring unmute himself. Uh, Councilman Herring, did you have a question?
Yes, um, mayor, um, I was looking at the financial report, and this is something that you, something that you need to treasure, look into. Basically, I'm looking at the, um, doing report under, uh, service charges for streetlights assessment and special assessment. They have no, um, revenue there, and they should. Um, some of the tax revenue that they have up at the top is overstated on a number of those lines. I think like that five hundred and forty thousand actually maybe probably belongs down in the, uh, special assessment area.
Okay.
So you may want to, you might may want to get the treasurer to look at that.
I'll take care of that. Thank you.
Okay, all right, that's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are, are there any other, um, Mayor Carter, I see your hand, but let me just, let me just get any other council members' questions, if there are any. Okay. And, and Mayor Cross, so I, I was going to open the floor for citizens' comments after all of your report, but do you want, uh, citizens to ask questions after each report, so it's fresh? Are you okay with that? Okay.
That's fine.
All right, uh, and, and for citizens' comments, these aren't general comments, these are comments specifically related to the treasurer's report. Okay, uh, Mayor Carter?
Thank you, President Curtis. My, my only question, it, it's not really a question, it's a request that, uh, if we're going to continue with this virtual, uh, is it possible for the statements, the financial statements, to be posted, I mean, you know, shown on the screen so that we can go along with, with what's being said. It's very difficult to understand figures, especially when you can't see them. So I would ask that if, if this is going to be the protocol that, um, we be allowed to, you know, that it be on the screen as the mayor gives the report or the, whoever's giving the report, so that we can see it as it's being done.
So great suggestion. We'll take that. Uh, the reports are provided, um, within seventy-two hours of the, um, of the meeting. Uh, so that's definitely, um, something that we can look into, and, um, the goal is to eventually bring forward a financial dashboard, and at which case then you'll have those on the website, and so you'll have all the information there as well. But, uh, baby steps right now, but I take that one for action as well. Um, uh, Councilwoman Curtis, how, what say you?
Oh, no, I, I agree. I'll, I'll just ask, uh, uh, just for a little patience on this one, we, our mayor just got sworn in. Uh, we just talked about having those reports ready, uh, for coming straight out of recess. And so there was, you know, with the special election, the mayor did get on board a little bit later, but for, uh, our next month's meeting, we should actually have those posted as a part of, um, the agenda on the, uh, website, so that everybody will have ample time to review them, um, and, uh, ask your questions, as well as during the meeting, have them posted so you can see. Yes.
Because everyone doesn't go on, and so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I think, uh, Councilwoman Smallwood.
Miss Smallwood?
Yes, I have a question in reference to, um, the treasurer. My question is, has the money that has spent on MLK Park, has it been reimbursed to the city from the open space grant?
So, as of right now, I don't see that that has been reimbursed to the city, and in fact, there was documentation, unfortunately, that was left open, um, but at the demise of our chief, uh, at which case, the code enforcement report actually does speak to that as well. Uh, we do have a little bit of work to do on that, but I will take an action, uh, Councilwoman Smallwood, to follow up, uh, to see if those funds have indeed been reimbursed, but as of right now, um, I don't have the knowledge that they have.
Okay, um, my other question, oh, wait till I get to say just some comment about that.
Okay.
Thank you, Miss Smallwood. Are there any other questions related to the treasurer's report? Okay, uh, Mayor Cross, you can go ahead with the chief's report.
Okay, very well, thank you. On fourteen June, this is the acting chief's report, July twenty twenty-one through August twenty twenty-one. Fourteen June, three of our officers made notification that the command staff would be resigning, um, from the agency. Uh, we actually lost, uh, private first class Burnett, we lost Corporal Simpson, and we also lost Officer Paul. Uh, we have subsequently replaced, uh, forgive me, hired, uh, new officers for in that loss. So the chief's report is actually looking pretty good. Uh, we have a few more hires that we'll bring forward, uh, relative to those resignations, uh, that line is resolved. Uh, July nineteenth, we've made contact with two applicants to advise them that we were going to have them to complete several more phases of their background investigation. Again, that's two more, uh, in addition to having resolved the July fourteen resignations. Uh, we met with private first class Burnett to receive, uh, an issue equipment, uh, on his exit interview, so that's one thing that we want to make sure that, uh, we bring out in this report, that as we are losing personnel, we're actually recovering our assets that have belonged to the city. The national night out was August the third. Many of you attended, and it was a success. Uh, there were, uh, the four replacement officers did indeed attend, and were able to meet the citizens. On August the fifth, uh, we did start a background investigation for three new qualified applicants, and that's Thompson, uh, Jennifer, and Jackson. Uh, those applicants have graduated from the Arundel Municipal Police Academy. Uh, the good thing about bringing in, uh, units, uh, personnel from the police academy is we get to bring them into a environment which, you know, the crime, as we are the third safest city, thanks to our FBI reporting, the crime is such that they would be able to bring themselves into, um, knowledge and skill set, without having too much of the, um, the, the, the fight, if you will, on the street. So, I know that, uh, Chief O'Donnell made that one of his staples to bring in new officers from the police academy, and, um, I, I will say that I'm happy to see that, uh, Acting Chief Jackson and, um, is continuing that path, because it's a really good opportunity for them to actually build a community, um, appreciation as well as being a superb officer. That concludes the chief's report. If there are any questions? Okay.
There was. Councilwoman Jones?
Yes, I have, um, the, uh, couple of chief's reports back, they, uh, submitted in the chief's report that the, um, the company of Wegmans was going to give the city, uh, a grant, uh, monies of five thousand dollars to purchase, uh, guns. Was that money ever received, and was the money spent for, uh, new guns for the officers?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. This is Acting Chief Jackson. Yes, we have received the money, and we are in the process of ordering the weapons. It'll take a hundred and twenty days for them to ship them out to us.
When, when was the funds received?
Uh, they were received back, I want to say, maybe early June.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Sure.
We talk about, uh, bringing in, uh, recruits from the, uh, Anarundo County Police Academy, but, um, we've lost a lot of experienced, uh, officers. Uh, is the makeup, I, I understand the, the, the strategy to bring in the, uh, re, re, new recruits, but are we hiring any experienced officers to kind of balance the new recruits and the officers that we have?
Uh, we have a few, I have a few applicants that, uh, are considered, uh, EPOs, experienced police officers from other agencies, but you have to be mindful and very careful that a lot of times, when those applicants do come to your agency to apply, they have a little baggage, and you want to make sure that you don't bring that baggage into your organization.
All right, thank you.
So, um, this is a citizen's. I just had a question.
Okay, oh, one second, uh, Ms. Cash. I, I did see, uh, Ms. Smallwood's hand up first. I don't know if that was intentional, Ms. Smallwood, or that... Do you have your hand up for a question?
I do, and this, this question is for Captain Jackson. Captain Jackson, uh, I want to know why the police officers are not patrolling Ward One. Now, I have sat out on my front in the evening and talked to residents for two, three hours. No police come down Pmont Avenue. I checked my ring in the, in the morning when I got up. No, no police officer come down Pmont Avenue at night. So why are we not having patrol in over in Ward One? And I'm not the only one in Ward One is voicing this complaint.
Well, I'm working on a strategy to improve our patrol, uh, efforts, uh, like assigning officers to patrol certain wards.
And when will that take place?
I'm in the process of working on that now.
Can you give me a timeline?
It will take place sometime between now and the end of the month. Um, well, yes, because right now, I mean, we're in a process of training officers, so that kind of limit us to having officers, uh, in particular areas, and we try to focus on the areas, too, where we get, uh, most calls for service.
Okay, my other question, Captain Jackson. I'd be out at, in my front yard in the evening after dusk. You had cars in the, in the parking lot up there, uh, last night. Uh, they had one up there in the parking lot after dark, working on the car. They had children riding around in the po- parking lot after dark. Now, that park got a sign up there that says park closed at, at dark. So why isn't, they are not patrolling the park up there?
Well, I can't answer why, but if you know that they're, they're, did you call the police to let them know that there's people in the park?
No, I don't. I shouldn't have to call the po- police when they should make a, uh, they should do a routine travel through that park. I was out there two hours and nobody came through. If they would have came through within two hours' time, friend, they would have seen it.
Well, I have to address that, but, you know, like anything else, people will be somewhere and do something. They see the police, they leave, and as soon as we leave, they'll come back. So it's like a re- revolving door. You can never say, okay, that they're not going to never be there, because they're going to do it. They're going to take chances. People are going to take chances and do things to break the law, and that's what they do.
I understand that, too. But if we had patrol, like we supposed to have, uh, it would slow it down a little bit. Because you can control the city of Glen Arden within forty-five minutes to a hour, because I did it. And I drove slow to see how long it would take you to control from one end of Glen Arden to the other end of Glen Arden, and it took me roughly forty-five minutes. So if officers call out on duty, I can understand that, but the officer's not called out on duty all night. And if he is called out on duty all night, you should have a backup.
Well, and because we are limited with personnel, sometimes there are only two officers on the street. So if they get a two-man call, they have to go. If they get a lockup, and they have to go up to DOC and Upper Marlboro, depending on what's going on, they may or may not be able to take, uh, arrest the inside, uh, facility until the correctional officers give them the okay to enter. So then they have to sit and wait.
So you need two officers to go down for lockup, or?
No, I'm saying, if one officer go.
Okay, I can understand if one officer to go, and that's still considered with one officer to patrol.
And I'm only making that comment because you said they need a backup. Well, if his backup is not available, then you just have that one officer patrol in the city.
Yes, but that one officer should be able to be seen sometime during the day, or sometimes during the evening. Or sometimes during the night.
So, I, I think, you know, o- one, if I could chime in here, um, you know, Acting Chief Jackson is, is newly acting chief, and he's looking at strategies of, you know, how he, how he and his team can, uh, police the, the city better, and I'm sure he'll, he'll look into it, uh, because it, I understand where both of you guys are coming from. And so we'll just actively look into it to make all of our citizens' Ward One, Two, and Three, uh, feel the presence of police officers. And, uh, Chief, Chief Jackson is actively working on that. Is that fair to say, Chief Jackson?
Yes, I am. I've even discussed that, had a com- a brief conversation with, uh, Mayor Cross about how we can improve, how we can improve our patrol, our procedures with our officers.
Okay, so I'm gonna let Mayor Cross chime in here, and Ms. Cash, Carla Cash, then you'll be on next question.
Thank you, Council President Curtis. So, um, we take that note, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Smallwood. Uh, but we do ask all citizens, if you see some nefarious behavior, please don't hesitate to call us. It is important that, again, as we do have new recruits, that we are, uh, training them on when the timelines are most likely when the, the behavior is beha- is, is, is happening. So the more you call, uh, they start to bill a log, and then from the log, we actually start to gather metrics that will help us build better rotational schedules. Uh, is it more likely to be on a Thursday or Friday? Is it every day of the week? Is it more likely, you know, on a Monday? I mean, these are things that help our police officers do better patrol overall. But I do thank you for bringing up the question. We have, um, uh, you know, over nineteen officers that we could utilize in capacity, but note that they're not on all shift at all time. As he said, he has two officers, and note that they can't drive all night. They do have to take breaks and rest, but for the most part, call in, that allows us to build better metrics to support the city overall. Thank you so much.
Ms. Carla Cash?
Um, I just had two ques- I mean, one question, and maybe a suggestion that may help with police, um. My question is, I noticed that you all said you were hiring from Anarundo County. Why aren't you hiring from Prince George's County?
Right, currently, right now, the Prince George's Municipal Police Academy, they have a class in session, but they don't grad- their recruits are not graduating until November.
Okay.
They only, they only host, uh, one, one class a year at the Prince George's County Municipal Academy, and that normally starts between the months of, uh, April or May, depending on what's going on. And then the Anorunam County Municipal Academy, their recruits go for ten months, because they don't go every day of the week like they do at Prince George's, um, Police Municipal Academy.
Okay, and then my suggestion is, maybe you might consider, um, Councilmember Smallwood and just the whole city is getting block captains, you know, for the community, um, because that could help as well. And also, sometimes we assume residents know what the codes are in the city and the county, and sometimes being new residents, and I'm not, I don't know whether they knew or, oh, but they're not educated, so maybe the council members could do like a walk, passing out the code enforcement books if Glen Arden has some, and, you know, educating the older and the new members, because things do change. So that's just my suggestion.
And, and I will communicate on the code enforcement books. We actually have passed those out. Uh, during COVID, the council, last council actually gave out PPNE, and along with the PPNE's actually does have a copy of the code book in there. But I love your idea of creating community block captains, where if there is, uh, you know, consistency of issues, then you have someone that becomes a partner with the City of Glen Arden Police Department and, uh, are able to readily respond and, and help us out. You know, I'm a big advocate for volunteers from community and building community using, you know, our resources that are in-house. So definitely love that idea. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Cash. Uh, Ms. Hunter? Ms. Hunter, did you have a question? Alita Hunter?
Hello?
Hey. Hello.
I just got not to call, my apologies. Good evening. Um, so I wanted to kind of piggyback off of, um, Ms. Smallwood's comment, um, not going to be the dead horse, but in Ward One, um, I know for the last two years, I have been requesting more police presence in Ward One. Because there, there's a lot going on in Ward One, and I know the chief said, um, that they go where there's more crime. Well, um, if, if, if your presence isn't there, there will be more crime. And, um, my neighbors, myself and others, we call if there's something going on, and a lot of times the police don't even make it out there in time, so what happens? They will, um, try to set up shop and, you know, just think that's a, a place that they can hang or do their dirt, or whatever the case may be. So I understand that, you know, y- you're just getting on board and, you know, you're working on a plan, but I, I, I'm really asking from the bottom of my heart that the police force in Glen Arden really reconsider and really consider coming into, I mean, Ward One, but I'm saying Ward Ones, Two, and Three, making your presence known. Making those roll through. Only time a police come up on my block is when somebody's called for the police or something is going on. It's never just a ride through. Ride through to see, you know, hey, just to make sure everything is okay. So, um. Being patient, definitely, I understand, but. The safety of the children and the seniors and everyone else in my community. Is very important to me, and again, I say Glen Arden does not feel as safe. Um, in some areas as it did years ago. So again, I thank you for all your service, and if we can help in any kind of way as citizens, please let us know. But I am one that will call, um, and if it's not right, I'm gonna call. Cuz if nothing else, I'm looking out for myself, I'm looking out for my elderly neighbors and everyone else, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Mayor Cross, uh, you can go on to the, uh, next report.
I- I didn't know if, um, Councilwoman Smallwood had any questions or if Anne was still up.
I have a, I got a follow-up question. Uh, today, Captain Jackson. I was leaving from Piedmont going up to my mom's house, uh, up to my mom's house. Normally take me about. A minute to get to my mom's house. Today it took me a roughly ten minutes to get to my mom's house. Because the kids, it's come, uh, the pines is going up to Glen Onward Elementary School. They had a line from Glen Onward Elementary School all the way back down to, uh, uh, Fifth Avenue. How are you gonna correct that problem?
Um, can I talk to that one, Chief?
Yes.
Okay, uh, that's part of the mayor's report, and thank you for bringing that up, Councilwoman Smallwood. Um, as many of you know, that the busing situation here, uh, across PG County. The before and after care programs here in, across PG County has not been rectified appropriately. And I believe I can say that because I've already told the Prince George's County School Board this and written a- a commentation on that. As a parent myself, uh, the before and after care has not been certified by the state yet. At which case, many of the children that are being picked up would normally be in before and after care kind of programs. Uh, so that would've killed some of the traffic on the roads, and additionally, um, it's happening. More frequently than I like to hear that we have children on the streets for hour at a time. And buses are in some cases taking hour and a half to drop children off. Because they're shy still two hundred and fifty bus drivers. So anyone that's riding the bus, the children. Are relatively not getting picked up on time, so, uh, the parents that are having to come pick their children up. Are having to wait in these extremely long lines, and you're absolutely correct, they're asinine. They're forty-five minutes to an hour long. And, um, that's something that is an inherent problem to our county, not having certified before and after care. Uh, for our parents that do need it, particularly our blue collar worker parents. And also the fact that the busing system due to COVID-nineteen, we lost a many of our- our drivers. And now, we also fear, uh, with the new mandate that came down at the national level. For all mandated, uh, federal employees, that is, to have the COVID-nineteen shot. Um, we are threatening, if you will, um, to potentially see that impacting more. Um, than- than- than not. And unfortunately, that's something that is not a police problem, but it is a police problem for safety. Uh, but it is an inherent problem across the county, and unfortunately, the- the, um. Superintendent of Schools has got to handle that one. But it is a known issue, and it has been communicated from me as a parent, several other parents, and. All that we're hearing is, is being worked, and preferably they will have a certified before and after care program. Um, by the state by October. But it is definitely a painful affair.
Uh, absolutely. It took me hour and a half to get my son. Uh, so I know that is county-wide, uh, statewide, really. Um, so, uh, Mayor Cross. Could you give your report and then I'll get to any questions after that, cuz I know this is all looped into your report, so if you do that now, then we can. Get everything at once, um, afterwards.
Uh, thank you, Council President. So the mayor's report wraps up from eighteen August to thirteen September today. Um, coming forward from eighteen August swearing-in ceremony, uh, the former chief of police Glen Arden. Uh, Philip Albert O'Donnell, we had an opportunity to celebrate his homegoing on September the tenth. Uh, we also attended the grand opening and did welcome at home to Woodmore Town Center Glen Arden on August the twenty-eighth. We have received invitation, uh, to various district-level, um. Engagements, including eight backpack drives and including, uh, going out and supporting, uh, various church. Opportunities for, uh, community outreach, if you will. Uh, as it pertains to the positions that we have to fill, we have our, uh, chief of police position, we have our city manager position. We also have our executive assistant position on the ICMA. Uh, which assists our municipalities in the hiring process, and we've also added them to the ICML. Uh, we've also have them on Indeed and other, uh, websites looking for. Uh, personnel that are interested in- in job opportunities, and it's looking pretty good. Our Department of Public Works, uh, Director is likewise one of those that will put on, and obviously we do have our treasure, which is. Uh, at this point in temp hire, uh, and we also have, um. As we communicated earlier, our police officers, but many of these are being fulfilled. So Council President Curtis, we will need to set up a meeting. Once these close, um, we have particularly one closing on the twenty-fifth, which is the executive assistant to the city manager and the mayor. Uh, we need to set up a closed meeting, if you will, so that we can, uh, get some interviews done and bring some people into the office. Uh, we have restarted school, and I've already communicated on some of the complications that we've noticed across the city. But it's not just our city, it's happening across the county, and it's a severe impact, and for that, you know, all I can offer is our apologies as a city. Um, we do have a city emergency notification service, and I know Councilman Herring has spoken to me many times about. Increasing our community awareness and, uh, communication is near and dear to my heart for our citizens as well. Uh, we actually do have a notification service that came with our Verizon, uh, paid subscription. So soon we'll be able to, uh, provide citizens with a phone number at which you can call for updates. Uh, and in the case of emergency or in the case of school closures or in the case of events that we may have, like National Night Out or otherwise. You'll be able to call and get a quick rundown of what's happening that week, and we'll say, for example, um. This week, September thirteenth through, um, September twentieth. So this is a good thing, and, uh, our executive assistant, uh, Ms. Victoria Lewis actually found out out doing some research on our. Robo-calling system that, uh, we may have already resolved. And, uh, with this particular emergency notification service number. Now, I also wanna say that we met with the American Legion that, um, two-seven-five, they actually have an amateur radio team. And they have an emergency alert notification and response, and they are willing to provide us for our municipal center. Um, a radio that actually links in directly to the emergency services. So it's a beeline, if you will, to information, just like OPM has for many of its federal employees. We would have that for our city, and it then put it back into our notification services number. So in the case of hurricanes or anything like that, we can give our citizens an update, so. We'll be working hard trying to pull together this community, uh, emergency response team, and we'll also pull together that notification service. So this is a win, uh, for our communications. Um, we have administration, uh, volunteer list that we've put out. Uh, as citizens, you're aware, and it's on the website, that we do have need of, uh, personnel to support us in various capacities. Obviously, the Board of Elections has said, we also have a permit review committee, we have an ethics committee, uh, forgive me, ethics commission. We have a youth advisory committee, we have the Glen Arden Civic Association, we have a financial advisory committee. And we have a public safety committee. All of these committees are in need of citizen support, so. Uh, Ms. Michelle Cheek is our administrative o- officer. And you can reach her at Emma Cheek, C-H-E-E-K, at cityofglenarden.org. Uh, if you're interested in helping the city in these capacities, and it would be a great service to us because. Uh, particularly as it pertains to the Ethics Commission, obviously, as Vice President of the Ethics Commission, I now have to relinquish that role. Um, I've been informed that, uh, we may have the role of, uh, another seat opening up, and so. It has to have five personnel, so we're in need of two personnel to support the Ethics Commission, for example. I know that one personally. But also, like I said, many of those are in need of volunteers, so please consider, search your heart, see if it's something you wanna do to support your city. And we will welcome it, you know, uh, when it deals with our youth, uh, we will, we have a resolution that we would like to put forward. Uh, for, uh, bringing on, uh, Mr. Jeffrey Hammond into the Youth Advisory, uh, Committee. Uh, as, right now, as a volunteer as well, so, uh, just bring that out. We are in need of citizen support in that capacity. Uh, as we look forward, we are looking at some internal office space issues. Uh, so we'll be looking at improving our office spacing, and. Uh, we're also looking at our position descriptions as we bring those forward and making sure that they're more aligned to what our city needs to grow. Um, the website committee has done a fantastic job, and thank you to Ms. Alita Hunter. Uh, Mr. Jess- Jesse Huff thus far, that has been working on the website committee, bringing forth with Ms. Monet. Uh, we do and have started, as per our last conversation, putting on statewide zoning planning as well as parking planning. Um. Committee meetings, hearings, uh, to make sure that the cities- citizens are aware. Uh, just for the record, they usually run through three hearings, and after three hearings, then it's pretty much set. Tonight, they actually did have a zoning hearing, and tomorrow they'll have another one, so please be sure to look at. Our website under, uh, city, uh, government and under, um. Community support, and then you'll see information about attending these meetings. It's so critical that we have the citizens' voice. So that as changes are happening on the- the- the lay of the land around us, particularly our borders and even in zoning inside of our borders. That our citizens get their right to speak. For our county and state, uh, local equities. Uh, we, again, are praying for the safeguard of our Prince George's County Public School System. But we do ask that everyone, you know, keeps that in their minds and hearts. Uh, they will start random testing our external vendors, which is, I think, a good thing for our schools. Uh, but they're also gonna start testing, uh, for all of our student athletes as we look at. For the City of Glen Arden, we have our elementary schools, but as we look at our high schoolers that are like in Charles Flowers High School. That they're actually gonna start doing random vaccine testing for our children. So in light of the federal government now making a mandate for all federal workers to have the COVID-nineteen vaca- vaccination. With the variant, uh, that's currently out. The preparations to bring forward a vaccine for those that are five years and older is on the ground. So citizens as well as council, I bring that forward, uh, just because there has been a little bit of anxiety. Uh, if you will, at the federal level, but note that that is something that is being looked at to be bought into our school systems for. The mandating of vaccinations. And, uh, other than that, we are ready for any questions, if you will.
Well, thank you, uh, Mayor Cross. You actually, um, touched on the staffing update and the update on the. Here in one countywide sectional, uh, map amendment, so. Very comprehensive. Thank you. Um, uh, Councilwoman Farid.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Cross, for that, again, comprehensive report. Um, I do have some questions about the reopening of the building. In our last meeting, uh, during the work session, I- I believe you mentioned that we were sort of following the model of the county. And, um, I had to go to the county last week for something, and I did notice that they had an app. For entry, which was a- a health screening, um, and if people didn't have smartphones, they had forms that you needed to complete. Um, and they also took everyone's temperature, uh, with one of those infrared scanners. And I was wondering if we are planning to do the same. Um, I think that that would be a good practice for, you know, a number of reasons, um, for the safety of the employees, for the safety of the citizens coming in. Um, and also for potential contact tracing if- if there was, um, a case. Um, and just kind of keeping in- in line with what the county was doing. Also, the county did have those six-feet markers, so I- I know it's been said, and I have heard it, you know, elsewhere as well. The social distancing is not being enforced, but when I walked in there, they, um, they said sign, you know, sign on this list and stand on the blue dot. And there were blue dots six feet apart, so they were definitely, um, enforcing that. So I would- I would hope since we are following the county, we would, you know, take as many precautions as possible, particularly since. You know, Delta is such an unknown at this point. Um, and then also further to that, as it relates to the employees. Are you considering, um, to- to mandate as some, you know, different government levels have done?
So for us mandating the vaccination, um. As of current, until it twinkles down, as I said, the federal level is already mandating all federal employees have the vaccination, and. I'm sure there will be some legal, uh, issues that will arise from that, but as it comes down that way, if mandated from the county, then we will follow suit with the county. Indeed, we do have our IR scanners up, so, uh, for folks that will come and pay their tax bill. When they first walk in the door by Ms. Cheek's desk, there actually is an IR scanner. If you walk in the door by our- our finance department, there is an IR scanner. Um, downstairs, we'll have to make sure that there's an IR scanner when we do open the facilities. Uh, forgive me, this facilities is open, but when we come back into council downstairs, then we'll make sure that is there. And yes, we can put taping on the floor for six feet, as well as make sure that our chairs are marked at the same distance. So those types of things are on us as a city to do. Uh, but you're right, the county has relaxed, even the mask-wearing requirement. We have maintained our mask-wearing requirement indoors, and as mayor, I've made that if there's a doctor's requirement. Where you don't need a mask in your private office, because many of our, um, administrative staff. Works in private offices, so then they are unmasked in their private office with doctors', um, doctor's note, and. Uh, that we have several people that have turned in doctor's notes because they do sit in an office alone. So other than that, when they're interfacing with others, then we're all masked up. So, uh, we are utilizing the best precautions we can within reason. And we do expect that the federal mandate to vaccinate, particularly in administrative offices. Will come down, and when it does, then we'll execute.
Thank you. Um, sorry, I'll let Councilwoman Guillaume go, and then I do have another question.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Thank you, Council President, and Madam Mayor for your report. I did have the, um, pleasure of reading your, um. Report prior to it being sent to everyone when you sent it to the council, so I just had a question as to, I believe it was the last. Um. Page or so regarding the Gold Room, and I received several, um, communications from different, um. Longtime residents who were want- who wanted to know about the inaugural ball. And why it was not being held in the Gold Room, as it typically has been held. I do know that last- last go-around when it was mayor. Um, Estes, the Gold Room was not available. I was actually on the ball, um, committee. I'm sorry for the noise in the background. Um, it was actually, um, held outside of Glen Arden because the Gold Room was unavailable, but we have. Uh, what I have received, and I know others as well have received several communications from residents who. Were inquiring as to why, um, it's being held outside of the city.
Thank you. So the- the swearing-in ceremony had just under a hundred and fifty people in it. And it was literally two rows of folks standing in the back. So upon seeing that, it just, I mean, it just, it broke my heart to see that people could not sit down. And not only that, but I also got phone calls from citizens who were not able to come into the facility because of lack of parking. Particularly citizens that have handicaps. Um, so for us. That's one of the key reasons why we took it out to the Camelot. Um so for us, that's one of the key reasons why we took it out to the Camelot. So the Camelot uh has an ability to hold three hundred persons, and even in holding three hundred persons, we just finished talking about the six-feet separation, they still have the capacity, if we go up to three hundred persons, to even still maintain a successful se- separation, if you will, of space from personnel. Uh masks are required except for inactive eating. So that's one of the, that's really the prime reason. Um the inaugural ball has already had a lot of interest in it, uh at which case, like I said, we could not fit a hundred and fifty people and there were at least thirty citizens or more that called and said they wanted to come, but they ended up staying outside because the room was full. And not only that, but the spacing for COVID restrictions as well, well, in their heart COVID requirements. So um as of right now, with the COVID ca- scare, there are still citizens who are still COVID leery, at which case the Camelot holds three hundred and we can maintain adequate spacing for comfort of personnel. Normally, the facility that we are renting can hold up to a thousand. So bringing it out there, um the intent was to cater to uh, you know, the emotional appeal of folks to ensure that we're doing all that we can to provide a safe environment uh for folks to have success, uh sufficient distance from each other, but also to be able to handle everyone that has a heart and an interest to attend. Uh this event will actually, uh we have been um fortunate to have Comptroller Peter uh Frencho to come and actually do a keynote speech uh on moving the mission forward together. Uh so with him comes some security as well. So it is one of those things that, like I said, we just wanted to cater to the consistent scare on the ground of being in close uh proximity, really tight spaces. And again, with COVID, one thousand persons it can handle, we're putting uh right now, I maxed it out at two hundred, but it can go up to three hundred and still be comfortably spaced.
Okay, I just um, so I just recently attended, well, not attended, I just recently had a meeting with Ms. Bonnie, I forget her last name um because I'm I'm holding a separate event at the Gold Room. But it was set up for a hundred and eighty people already, so I'm not sure how many, this is the Gold Room, so I'm not sure if you're saying two hundred, if there were different floor plans that were in place, because it was pretty spread out. Um and it was for a wedding, actually, and it was probably a week ago, um as far as the wed- wedding was concerned. So I just wanted to to put that out there because the calls that I have been receiving um was this, they're very disheartening, where it was, you know, we voted for, you know, they supported you, they voted for you and they want to be able to celebrate, but they feel like they have to go elsewhere. Um or others are going to be celebrating you while they're not having the opportunity, so that, so I I do want to say that for the citizens who did reach out to me. The other um thing that I also wanted to clarify um to citizens was reason why I was, I'm sure they were reaching out to me and probably uh my other colleagues on the council, is it's the invitation itself says City of Glen Arden invites you to. And in all that, so they, so a lot of people are saying, are you, is this your event, you know, is this the city's event? Or is this somebody, is this Mayor Cross's event, you know, and if it is the city's event as it is advertised, then how are we putting on an event with taxpaying dollars, taxpayers' dollars and then charging them? So wanted to know if you can clarify that for those who are on this call.
Well, thank you for that. So this is utilizing my name, you know, I I pay for everything I do. So this isn't utilizing any citizens' money. Um uh at at rich, at which case, um honestly, the citizens, I am grateful for everyone that did vote and that's why we wanted to make an opportunity for anyone that wanted to attend to attend. Again, what really broke my heart was at a swearing-in ceremony where it was standing room only, we couldn't have citizens in that space and it was just under a hundred and fifty and they were just standing. Uh and that didn't include tables and a seven-piece band and a DJ and all the other stuff that's playing for this inaugural ball. So there's some major heavy-hitting things that's playing for this ball and it would have maxed out the Gold Room, it just would have. And it would have been uncomfortable and it, and there's nothing more disheartening is to have a space and, you know, something happened like uh, you know, the spread of COVID in an environment. Weddings are interesting as well, I understand, but mostly, you know, uh in a wedding, you know, everybody knows each other too, right? Um and in a wedding, you can also, because it's family, uh prove that everybody has their vaccinations and other types of things as well. In this capacity, uh the mandate to wear a mask is best we have as of right now. Uh so that's one of the issues, really, that's one of the issues. As far as the Gold Room, we'll have so much more opportunities in the Gold Room. Uh this is a night of, it's once in four years, is what it is, it's once in four years. So as of right now, I I do wish that citizens, if they're calling you, can call me, I want every citizen to hear that. Uh my number and name is, you know, my name and number is 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 posted. You can reach me on the city cell phone at three oh one, six four one, four seven seven two. You can reach me at uh C. Cross, at cityofglennarden.org. And if there's a citizen that needs some support, then just reach out, because, you know, there's opportunities there as well. I understand that there's some people that are are um maybe a little strapped for cash. Okay, just let us know. But, I mean, you know, we can always work anything out, but we do need specifics of where we are uh versus generalities. But that's the way it was. Um as far as the city, uh whenever um obviously, whenever I roll out as Mayor Cross, I'm representing the city regardless. Um but I do welcome the council, if you have funds. I know last year, I believe fifteen hundred dollars was donated to Mayor Estes's inaugural ball to support and that could really go a long ways, uh if you would do the same in this case and offsetting some of the funds, if you will, for our seniors that, you know, may uh need some additional support. So I offer that, I mean, it's um, if that's something that the council, if it pleases the council to do that. But it would definitely be a big support and we can also look at for for citizens that may be a little strapped for transportation, um seeing what we can do as far as transportation as well.
Okay, so thank you for that level of clarity. Madam Mayor, I just want to say that I, just one thing that I heard and then I'll stop talking and give others the opportunity to to speak, that you did say that this is being, this is being paid by your resources, you know, it's coming out of your pocket. But the invi- the, but the invitation itself doesn't state that. It doesn't say, you know, Mayor Cross invites you to her inaugural celebration or whatever. It says the City of Glen Arden. And for Mayor Estes, um it was the inaugural ball committee invited, you know, invited them, meaning the citizens, to the inaugural ball in honor of Mayor Estes. So very different because the inaugural ball hosted it, whereas this particular gala, um the ci- it's implied that the city is hosting it because it says the city invites you to. So just want to put that, but I'll I'll let others share on other stuff. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Fareed.
Hi, so thank you for those questions. That was my line of questioning. I thought you were gonna ask about uh the opening up of the building, but um a lot of my questions have been asked. I know, uh Mayor Cross, I did send you an email with some of those same questions, so I appreciate you answering them. I do, though, want to um point out that I think by uh advertising it as the City of Glen Arden, in doing so comes a responsibility of transparency. I'm certain that this administration wants to make sure that everything um is transparent, both in fact and appearance. Um one of the things that would be concerning, as an example, is, you know, not knowing what the actual cost of the um, the the value is per person and then being charged and knowing what the difference is between that. So as an example, if um the cost of what the venue is charging you is thirty dollars per person, but the tickets are sixty-five dollars, it would be helpful for it to say something like, um you know, thirty-five dollars is a contribution or donation or whatever it is and just knowing where those funds are going. We want to make sure that the appearance, again, in fact and, you know, uh in appearances are up and up because we don't want to have any kind of drama with that. So um if it is your event, then certainly, you know, you can do what you want, but I would still, you know, you being, having been on the Ethics Committee can understand the perception of what that would be if you were, you know, seen to be making a profit off of the event. Um and if you're, if it's a donation or if it's going towards your, you know, campaign fund, I think that needs to be very explicit for people to know, particularly because the cost is not an all-inclusive cost, um meaning it doesn't include the cost of um alcohol, the bar. So I think it is very important to, you know, just say what the actual value of the ticket is in comparison to what is being charged and what what the difference is going to.
Okay, so uh this is really great. Thank you for that. And I will tell you, all in all, the venue is about fourteen thousand dollars. So that fourteen thousand is being sponsored out of the pocket of Mayor Cross and her family. Uh actually sixteen thousand because uh, you know, you had to secure the contract for the facility, so that's the cost. And if we take um sixteen thousand, because we, this is gonna be an evening for um of elegance for our city and my investment has always been above bar when it came down to my citizens. Uh so if we take the sixteen thousand and that includes your food, which is an open buffet uh with service that has over five meats, uh it has three vegetables, it has um inclusive of uh tea, coffee, water, uh of course, your alcoholic beverages. Uh did not pay for those primarily because I don't drink alcohol myself, so I did make it an open bar and being from the military, we have a two-drink limit. So anybody leaving there uh in trouble, but uh we definitely will have uh watchers on board for that uh reason as well. Uh you know, I come from the military. So with that being said, that's the number. Uh if we look at the tickets and that price at fourteen thousand and we divide that by uh two hundred, then the tickets should have been seventy dollars to cover all the price. As of right now, the adult tickets are sixty-five dollars and the children's tickets, twelve and under, are thirty-five dollars. So uh as a gift of each citizen, they're not gonna have to pay all of the costs. So we've also opened up tables, if you wanna save even more money, then a table of ten is at six hundred dollars. And no, none of this goes back to a campaign fund and none of it goes back to Mayor Cross's family's pockets. Every dime will be paid to the facility. And as you note, as I say, the baseline ticket should have been seventy dollars, uh which is already, if I just say only sold adult tickets and we have at least fifty children tickets already, which are thirty-five dollars, and we'll do the math on that, times two hundred, then there's a thousand dollars that's short. If we take the children's tickets at thirty-five dollars, for every child ticket, it's thirty-five dollars short. So if I have fifty children tickets at thirty-five dollars, that's another seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. So add that to the thousand. To have a venue at Camelot and provide this for the citizens of Glen Arden, one night of opportunity to celebrate and uh at the Camelot, we are actually short twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. So we are not making anything on this event, but it's our heart to give this back to the citizens. And um, you know, that's not to include any comp tickets. So we actually have a Christian Mind Group, which is MLA Minds, which is huge in this area. Uh Malik Arnett is the director, uh his troop of five will be paid for. We have a seven-piece band, which is well-known singers and artists actually coming out of this area. We will pay for their tickets. Um we will pay for any keynote speaker's tickets. Uh and as a which case, we are also going to make sure um that, you know, that everything's on the up and up. So I'm fully transparent. Um just thank you for that question. There is, like I said, I add those up, that's twenty-seven fifty. Plus.
Well, Mayor, Mayor Cross, I just think, I think, appreciate the the math on this. I think really the point was just making that information available somewhere um in case people don't come back to this recording, whether it be including it on the ticket or in the receipt for the ticket or just, you know, having the overall cost documented. You know.
Yeah, but I mean, ultimately, uh Councilwoman Fareed, uh Councilwoman Guillaume, what we're looking at is about four grand. That's short in putting this on for our citizens, which we'll happily pay, because we just wanna have a good time with them. That's it.
Um, Carla, I had a question. Um so I'm hearing Mayor Estes because the bo- um Gold Room wasn't available and then I heard that there was an inauguration committee. So this current mayor doesn't get inauguration committee at all? Because you said that, that, you know, you, the discrepancy with it coming from the city, so is the inauguration committee different from the city?
If you're, so this is Councilwoman Guillaume, yes, it's different. So um four years, four plus years ago, I was just a regular citizen and I was approached by the uh Mayor Estes, um the First Lady, actually, who said that she and, well, Mayor Estes had to put forth a mayoral ball and, or inaugural ball, as they'd call it, and they were looking for volunteers who would be willing to help fundraise for this event. And because the Gold Room was not available, hence why they needed to fundraise, because they needed to find a location and that location would cost money, whereas the Gold Room was not, um or would not be um at an expense that would be egregious. So what technically, so what happened was myself and there were other volunteers, some are on this call, citizens from Ward One, Ward Two, Ward Three, um all were all part of the inaugural ball committee. We actually set up sponsorship packets. I personally sold tickets um to uh people in my network. I went to Wegmans, I went to different places and ma- uh got the funds that were needed for um the payment of the venue, since it was not in the Gold Room. Also, uh the mayor is correct, the cu- the council at the time, four years ago, not last year, made a payment because they knew that typically the Gold Room would be gratis, uh would be given for free, excuse me, so um for the mayor to hold the event. So because the Gold Room, I believe that's why the Gold Room was not available, um a gift was made um for the usage of this particular outside of the city venue, because there were no other venues available. So the inaugural committee were the ones that actually utilized their resources and ran around and whatever was left over to be paid, I don't want to speak um for Mayor Estes, but I believe he utilized the remainder of his campaigning dollars to fund the gap. So it was the inaugural, it was the City of Glen Arden Inaugural Ball Committee who hosted the event. So hopefully that answers your question.
Okay, it does answer my question for one part of it. Um the second part of it was, um I think Mayor Cross is selling tickets now from what I've seen. So that's like fundraising and getting sponsored tables, so that's almost like the same thing. But I do speak for somebody with a disability. We just attended a funeral at the Tampa Hall last week and there was only two spaces that was for handicapped people. One of those handicapped spaces One of those handicapped spaces had the City of Glen Arden Code Enforcement Car in it, which I think is unacceptable. When I go, I have handicap tags. Unless there's no handicap spaces available, I don't park in a regular space, because I won't get a five-hundred-dollar ticket parking in a regular space. But it is not fair that people who are citizens of Glen Arden who have disabilities have to walk and do extended walk because there's only two handicap spaces. So having a inaugural ball, I would assume would be more than a hundred and fifty people that you wouldn't even want that to even be an instance of them not being able to attend. From what I heard, it was a long-known resident of Glen Arden who couldn't even attend the swearing-in because there was no place for him to park to get in for the swearing-in. The other thing is COVID is real. We don't just have Delta variants. There's two other variances that are out that they aren't even addressing. You know, bringing up, they just keep talking about the Delta. And truthfully and honestly, I don't even think they got a handle on the regular COVID. So spacing is really critical. When we had the funeral there last week, I don't see how that could hold comfortably. And even in the hallway get, coming in there, you have people would have to be waiting outside. And if there's rain, we don't know what the weather's gonna be like. So I mean, personally, I think that if people are selling tickets to come, we all should be in support of supporting the mayor in terms of attending the inauguration. And if it's not gonna cost the City of Glen Arden anything and the money is going to be coming from the sale of tickets, I don't see, but definitely because of handicap, because I am a handicap person. And I don't like walking up and downstairs because I have steel plates and screws in my ankle. And then, and then my other statement was getting back to um Councilmember Smallwood. I agree with her. When this, when Glen Arden School did the tech, did they meet with the City of Glen Arden to do a traffic study in terms of those buses? Because I know I grew up in Glen Arden and we had a lot of walkers. We didn't have a problem with the buses because the buses wrapped around inside the parking lot and it didn't cause any traffic problem, but that should be something that the city look into, meeting with the school board. It shouldn't be Glen Arden Police who has to control the traffic. The school board, since they're bringing busing students in and having a maximum amount of buses, they should have done a traffic study. And they also should provide Prince George's County Police to help with the traffic control so that Glen Arden Police are not troubled with that during the school hours. And it is unacceptable. I understand Ms. Smallwood that taking ten minutes to get a couple blocks and um Councilmember Curtis said it took him over an hour. So you really should go back to the school because none of those kids are residents of Glen Arden. Their tag busted into the community.
Thank you, um Ms. Cash. Are there any other questions um from the council before we move on? Uh there, there's only one other thing, um Mayor Cross, that uh you and I have already talked about it. It just and it goes back to what Councilwoman Gion was talking about, was just the advertisement of it. I, I think Mayor, Mayor Cross is well within the rights to have a mayoral ball. Um but I do understand the, uh the difference between the, the mayor sponsoring it and the city sponsoring it and uh the mayor and I spoke earlier today and she was looking at ways to um uh retitle or advertise uh the name uh, you know, which it was in line with uh with Councilwoman Gion talked about uh whether it be the committee or whatever, just to, so there's transparency and clarity, because this is something that uh Mayor Cross is, is coming out of her pockets, her family's pockets to sponsor this event. So uh in in concert with transparency, she has agreed to um change the the uh title, if you will.
Well, now here's the question, uh I think I have for the council, because there's uh items that have been purchased now. The council has been aware, our members of the council have been aware that the inaugural ball was coming since the twenty-seventh of August. Uh and that was well before any documentation or paper was actually printed. Um so now we have tickets. These tickets have the City of Glen Arden invites you to. Um that would be uh really I think that would be an interesting challenge at this time, because you would just have to trash those and start over. And it's already the thirteenth of September, so that's unfeasible at this time. Um the truth is, I mean, we have the Glen Arden Track Team, we have the Glen Arden Football Team, we have the First Baptist Church of Glen Arden. None of which are actually associated with the city, though they bear the city's name. All of which do collect funds and sponsorships for their particular entities. But they bear our city's name. So it's no different in as much as I am your mayor and is a part of the city. So the truth is, I mean, um I think we may be looking at this in an extreme. Um the truth uh has already been communicated. I mean, you wanted to know the finances, we're short four thousand dollars. I, I asked the question if the council would be kind enough to support. I mean, if the answer is no, the answer is no. If the answer is yes, then great. Uh but I also highlight, I think the, the costing for each one of these tickets is actually supposed to be at seventy dollars. At which case they're already beneath the, the asking cost. So it's clear, I think, transparent that Mayor Cross isn't making anything on this. Simply only wants to celebrate with citizens uh who did and didn't vote, but who do have now an opportunity to support us moving the mission forward. Uh so that's where we are. The, the, many of these products have been ordered at this time. Uh particularly because it's the thirteenth of September, the communication and uh Councilman Curtis, you'll see it, I forwarded to you since August the twenty-seventh, as been known. So um I think that may be just a small nuance. Um uh the citizens have now been informed and in snow on a recorded line that uh I haven't received a dime from the council in this and has footed all of the bill and will foot all the bill for any guest or any appearance. But um you know, if the citizens want to come, then they know that they're just paying into the facility and not to me directly. So I think it may be a small issue again with already more than a few uh entities that are not, not associated with our city bearing the city name. Um I don't see that it should be an issue if I'm your mayor.
And this is Carla again. I think if you go and change something now.
Ms. Cash, Ms. Cash, if you can um just hold your comment to the end, uh because we're running out of time, uh and, and you just spoke. Um and so I wanna give others a, a chance to speak. Uh I'll come back to you after we come to others, but I really wanted to, one, keep us on time, so we get out of here at seven-thirty to nine-thirty uh and give the last thirty minutes for citizens' comments. So if there's no other citizens that want to comment, then this cash, I'll definitely come back to you. There's one other thing left on the uh agenda that I want to get to before citizens' comments that will not take long. Um so I want to close this out, so we can get to, to your, your comments. Uh if that's okay. Um but were there any other comments from the, the council before I go for, move forward with the next item? Okay. Um Mayor Cross touched on the staffing and the, the county meetings uh related to um related to the, the mapping and the zoning. So I think, you know, we've, we've touched on those things. There will be another meeting tomorrow, I believe, at six P M. Is that correct, Mayor Cross?
There will be a meeting and it is listed on the city's website, on the community.
So if you want to learn more and get involved, then voice your uh opinion, please go to the city website. Um follow the instructions, go, you know, where you need to go to the county and, and make your voice heard. I know that if you want to speak, I believe that you have to register uh twenty-four hours in advance. So it's too late for tomorrow, but they will, there will be another one on Wednesday. But if you register um, you know, tonight or early tomorrow morning, you should hopefully get in the door to, to make your voice heard. Uh so.
Mr. Curtis, my hand has been up for a while.
Ms. Smallwood, Ms. Smallwood, you will be the first person I, I go to. I, I, I really wanna keep this meeting on track and I wanna, from nine and nine-thirty to be open to the citizens, so your voice can be heard and you can be resp- uh we can respond. The last item I have will literally only take about five minutes. It's just an introduction of resolution. So, Smallwood, I will come to you first when the ci- I open it up for citizens' comments. Okay?
Okay.
Uh the last item on the agenda is uh introduction of resolution for a council clerk. Uh we wanted to introduce this. We have uh, uh been looking for council clerk for quite some time. Uh and uh we have graciously found one. Uh and this uh introduction is just to uh put it out there, so then we can vote on it uh with our next meeting, which will be next week. Um so let me pull it up.
What a border, uh Mr. President.
Uh Councilman Harry?
Yes, okay. Now, I know I haven't seen this resolution. And it wasn't at a work session, and I know it hasn't been at a public hearing. So how's this being introduced?
Well, one, we, we have discussed it and I didn't mention it at the work session last week.
Um no, we were supposed to have a meeting with the attorney on some of it, and we thought of a closed meeting on this. I know we have to discuss some of the financial aspects of it. I'm not gonna get into the details. Personnel. And that never occurred. And again, that's a, that's piece of legislation that, there should be actually two pieces of legislation that we should be looking at that we should be discussing. And again, it has not come for a public hearing, and that's required under the charter.
We're, we're not voting on this tonight. Uh Councilman Herring, this is the introduction. I, I mentioned it at the uh meeting last week, uh when at the uh special works, not special works, the work session, that we would be introducing a, a resolution for a council clerk. This is just a, a public reading of it. It, we're not going to be holding on it.
Okay, the, the charter says that no legislation can be introduced until after it's had a public hearing. That's what the charter says. So it cannot be introduced tonight until it has a public, has had the public hearing first. This is not like an ordinance where you're gonna do an emergency ordinance and then you, you can read it. That's a completely different. With a resolution, there is no such thing as an emergency resolution. So you're gonna have to have a public hearing before you can even introduce this piece of legislation.
Well, then we'll, we will table it for next week, for next week's public hearing. It's not, it's, to me, it's, it's not a big deal. We're just trying to get the, the work of the city done. So if it's, if it's out of proper protocol, it's not malicious in, in its intent. Uh so if that's what the charter says, and Ms. uh Councilman Herring, I will believe you, you're a very smart man and know well the charter. Uh we'll wait till next week. That's certainly fine.
All right, thank you.
Uh so with that, uh I'm
I have one question on resolution as well. So with our submission, the administration turned in a resolution to appoint Jeffrey P. Hammond to the Glen Arden Youth Advisory Committee. Uh any thoughts and considerations to that, Council President Curtis?
Well, that, that's separate, but we can, you know, and keeping with Councilman Herring uh and his, you know, uh expertise on how we should bring things. We will wait till next week to the public hearing to introduce it. Uh but with that, uh it takes a little bit more vetting, because it's just, it's more than just a public reading of a resolution. It's actually vetting that goes into uh Mr. Hammond. Uh some members of the council may have questions for him. Uh and those will be private, so that should be brought forth, I believe, in the uh, in the closed meeting, so we can address those things.
Okay, so I'll have to set up a closed meeting for uh the council to uh conduct an interview. And then from that, from that interview, and just making sure I have the, the steps in order. Uh set up a closed session for the council to conduct an interview. From the interview, then we will do background checks and security clean screening. And then we'll bring the resolution.
Councilman Harry, uh I'm gonna lean on you for this one, as it relates to proper protocol.
What was that again?
So this is uh to bring a resolution to appoint Jeffrey P. Hammond to the Youth Advisory Committee. So as I understand, appointing someone to a committee is one thing. Now, if they're going to be a director of that committee, then there's a different uh protocol that goes into it. I'm not aware that uh personnel that have served on the Youth Advisory Committee have actually been fingerprinted and, and, and screened. But if the, the requirement is to interview Mr. Hammond first, then uh background check and fingerprinting second before third, bringing his resolution before a public hearing. Fourth, work session for voting. So I'm just trying to understand what's the steps in the process, because uh we really have a lot of need, particularly with, as much as we've talked about COVID causing a mental um uh issue across this county for our children. Uh we have our Harvest Day Rewind, which is after uh Halloween, which is the first Saturday after Halloween. So we want to make sure, and by the way, Mr. Hammond actually works for Child and Youth Services for Washington, D.C. So this is a um a volunteer that is already certified uh by Washington, D.C. in Child and Youth Services. So he's not someone that isn't um familiar with background checks and fingerprinting when it deals with children. I mean, he's, that's his day-to-day job. So this is uh the right guy for this type of a committee. And you will recall, he also led a summer program, which did employ college students out of Bowie State and various other uh high schools with his uh B and D bikes, uh bike uh weekend delivery. So uh this is a astounding citizen that, like I said, is already certified in Child and Youth Services, and he actually handles troubled youth out of Washington, D.C. And uh now he's so graciously volunteered to be a part, if you will, of our um Glen Arden Youth Advisory Committee. So um I would like to bring a resolution to appoint Mr. Jeffrey P. Hammond, and I just wanted to clarify and make sure I had the right processes.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if you wanna get it through fast, he needs to we having a public hearing and at the public hearing, anybody that you're appointing really needs to come to that public hearing to get that out of the way. But we still, as a council, still need to vet uh the, the person. I mean, as you know, we've had an issue in the City of Glen Arden. And one of the biggest iss- I mean, you know, we had a cer- issue with a situation that happened, you know, um and so, you know, so we gotta, as, as a city, gotta do our due diligence with anybody that's dealing with any of the young people. And everybody on our Youth Advisory Committee actually got fingerprinted and background.
So then I, I will need to set up an interview for the council. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, so that we can meet him and um get some background information on him.
Okay, very well, sir. So we'll set up a interview, a closed, closed session interview with the council. Uh provide you a resume uh during that with seventy-two hours prior to, it's my gold star standard, seventy-two hours prior to. And um we'll go from there. I, I think you'll find that he's a, again, upstanding citizen and um this is a a good choice, a good select. Thank you for the clarification and I'll be uh coordinating that as, as soon as possible.
Thank you. Um so one point of clarification, and then I'll open it up for uh citizens' comments. But just back to the resolution for um our council clerk uh in the Charter, Section three oh eight, Procedure for an Act of Resolution Ordinances. A resolution may be introduced by any council member at any regular or special meeting of the council. Unless otherwise required by law, a resolution may be enacted by a council only after a public hearing has been held. A resolution may not be passed on the same day as the public hearing, but may be passed at any regular or special meeting of the council uh held not less than six days after the public hearing. A resolution shall be enacted for the affirmative vote A resolution shall be enacted for the firm of vote of at least four members of the council. Uh, so in reading that, that was uh my um um reasoning for introducing that because it it is allowed on the charter. But as I said, Mr. Harry, it it doesn't matter to me, we can wait next week, uh as we are running out of time anyway uh to introduce it. So um I was in compliant with the charter as relates to introducing the 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 resolution at this meeting, since we weren't going to vote on it.
Well, but you had to enact, to enact it, you had to bring it to the table, you were gonna read it, do a first read, I mean, you don't do first readings of resolutions. Resolutions are read into the record and voted on that night, immediate and go to immediately into effect. It's not, it's not, but I mean.
It's okay, it's all right, I I, you know what, like I said, I yield to your, your, you know, wealth of experience in this, uh, Councilman Herring, and it's, it's okay for us to bring it next week. So, thank you. Uh, and now we're opening up to uh citizens' comments. As promised, uh, Ms. Smallwood, you are first up.
Okay, my first comment is for uh for the mayor.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one, one second, so I will be holding everybody to five minutes just so everybody can get in, so um, you know, just be mindful of that when you're getting your questions out, sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Smallwood, you can go ahead.
Okay, Mayor, uh, oh, I have five minutes, so I need you to have your response that's distorted, because I got several questions for you, okay? Uh, you mentioned that the Civic Association is a committee of Glen Arden. The Civic Association is not a committee of Glen Arden because they are nonprofit organization. Uh, you can respond to me after, after I read my questions to you. The second question, you said that the Ethics Committee has two vacancies, and I'd like to know who, uh, what two vacancies uh they are. Also like to know if you have resigned from the Ethics Committee, since you are now the mayor of Glen Arden. And my third question to you is um, since all the paperwork has been turned in to be by, has the uh permit been um has to permit been available for the city to pick up? Also, um, oh, y'all pulled the one for the clerks, so I will ask that one when y'all have the next meeting about the clerk. Also, um, you said something about the the treasurer. Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't Mr. Stewart uh the was uh was signed, when he came on board, he was, came in as a staff accountant? And if he came in on board as a staff accountant, why are he signing documents saying that he's the acting treasurer? Now, if he's the acting treasurer, has repaid for his um contract for Robert Half, because that's where he came from. So can you answer all of my questions?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Councilwoman Smallwood, the Civic Association is a nonprofit, I only highlight it uh because I was uh informed that it is in need of some um membership. And um a couple of the leaders, uh, well, particularly one of the leaders communicated to me just yesterday that they were looking at resigning that position, at which case, the Civic Association is a critical com- critical community partner with the city. And uh so therefore, uh, I think that's one that we definitely want citizens to be aware of. Not sponsored by the City of Glen Arden, but it is a critical partner, same as debt two seventy-five, uh, which is the American Legion. Uh, the, the Civic Association reports and helps us as a city see things that, you know, we may ordinarily not see uh because they are comprised of citizens, concerned citizens, okay? Um, the Ethics Commission, yes, I will resign the Ethics Commission, and Mr. White, um, due to family uh reasons have asked that, you know, I find and consider someone uh in his place as well. Um, for the permit, now, the issue with the permit is that was worked by Chief O'Donnell, and unfortunately, Chief O'Donnell passed before the permitting process could be completed. So the documents have not been picked up, and as of which case, we need to bring that before the council in this next meeting, uh primarily because, like I said, the, there was a um the documents that Chief put forward obviously cannot be supported at this point. Uh, the document number is attached to him, and obviously, he's not here. So really, we're gonna have to either start over or pull both of those documents. But it's gonna take a little bit more um investigation on my behalf as the mayor to figure out where this um process is. Ultimately, because the last persons who had their hands on it are no longer with us. Mr. Tim George's depart- has left the city, and uh unfortunately, we lost Chief O'Donnell. So this is gonna require a little bit more work and investigation. Uh, for Mr. Stewart, uh, Mr. Stewart was hired as acting treasurer. And yes, we are paying um Robert Half for his support.
Are you paying out of his contract?
Mm-hmm, that I'm aware.
Okay, can I ask the question, how much are you paying out of his contract?
That, that is, is.
Is classified, well, forgive me. Well, when we I'm sorry, Council President, I'm talking over you, continue.
No, um, I'm not uh sure that we can, and I don't feel comfortable giving out that information, um, so, yeah.
All right, I will put an MPI request in for it. Oh, um.
Uh, but, like, thank you, Ms. Smallwood, but you're.
I got one more thing from Ms. Claus, Ms. Claus.
Ms. Ms. Smallwood, Ms. Smallwood, so it, if.
Finish, Curtis, I will be finished, Ms. Claus.
Okay.
I would like to be on the Ethics Committee, thank you.
Thank you so much for volunteering.
Uh, Mayor, uh, I will go to Mayor Carter and then uh to, I think, uh, Ms. Hunter had her hand up, but I will go Ms. Mayor Carter, then uh Ms. Hunter next.
Um.
And and Ms. Smallwood, can you please mute yourself, mute yourself, please?
Um, President Curtis, council members, I have five concerns that I'd like to to bring them all to your attention and then uh get an answer from the council so that it doesn't take the five minutes. My first concern is, are you hiring anyone as cable, uh, for the cable studio? Um, as a director of the cable studio, or someone to um, you know, to take care of the cable station? My second concern is, the signs for this to, for tonight's meeting did not go up until after twelve o'clock today. That's not acceptable. And at that, they are the, we had very nice signs when they were advertising the mayor's swearing in. Where are those same signs for our meetings? Um, and would you please make sure that the signs go up in a timely manner? Number three is, are we going to open, I think you kind of probably addressed this, open the town hall for public meetings, when do you anticipate doing that? Is the um um the, the uh Citizen Room at uh way, at um Woodmore, is that going to be available to the, to the citizens? Uh, if it is, when? Um, and when the mayor talks about submitting um for um a resolution, I hope that the council realizes that those um, that the administration does not submit um resolutions of the, the council, that is a council function, is to um request um resolutions, not the administration, that's. And my final concern is, I listened to the meeting um last week, the work session, and Councilman Herring made a request. And I, I'm really disillusioned that he is going to be, that he is going to find it necessary to perhaps take legal steps to get something that is public information. And I would ask that the city work with the councilmen to uh it create uh an avenue that the information that he has requested, the information that he has asked for somehow be given to him so that he can move forward with whatever the issue is that he has. Um, and I would, I would just like to throw that out there, since I did hear his uh concern with not being given uh information that is public information, thank you.
Mayor Carter, thank you. Oh, Mayor Carter, thank you uh for your concern, so I'll, I'll address some of them, and then I could get to Mayor Cross if you don't mind. Uh, so as it relates to Mr. Harry, Councilman Herring's request, uh, as I mentioned last week, I'm, I'm all for it. If it's, if it's legal, and it looks like it is legal, uh, we will do a consensus. Uh, I don't know if anybody else have any um questions for the um the uh lawyer, uh, when we talk with him, but I fully expect that Councilman Herring will get what he requested with, with no legal uh action.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we have to, not, speaking prematurely, but I think we have the votes to give him what's freely his. Um, I am in agreement with you with the signs for the meeting. Uh, in fact, uh, that's one of the questions that I did not ask, because one sign had seven o'clock, another sign had seven thirty, uh, and and they look awful. Um, and so, uh, you know, I I agree, and and one thing that I've um uh have taken uh steps to do is making sure the citizens are aware of these meetings well in advance. Uh, so we all know that there's a work session on the first Monday, uh, a regular session on the second Monday, and a public hearing on the uh third Tuesday, uh, those are standard meetings. Uh, then I'm, I I've already spoke to the mayor about it, and the mayor, I believe, is taking steps to make sure that those are up in a timely manner. Uh, as, as far as relates to the actual informational establishment work, I'll let her talk to, um. The uh Community Room at the Woodmore, I believe, wants the mayor, and you correct me if I'm wrong, well, Councilwoman Free, do you want to take that one?
It is um available, once the city um became uh opened, reopened, that space is being um rented. And I, I'm not sure if it's Ms. Cheek to contact or Ms. Schultz to contact, but um that I, I'm, last week, uh, Ms. Schultz mentioned that we were, are, were actively renting it out. Um, so you can call the city to rent that.
Is it still for the fifty dollars?
That's, I was just ready to say, what we discussed um last week, or what I introduced, was potentially um increasing that amount if we felt we needed to get revenue, um, because the lease does not um prevent us from that. But right, right now, at this point, it is still the same price that it's advertised at.
Okay. Thank you, I think that took three of yours.
What about the Gold Room? And Gold Room and the, the cable station?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna let, I may cross-touch on those things. Uh, and as it relates to the public meeting, for uh people to come into the meetings, we will be talking about that at our closed meeting uh as well, as we want to make sure we have the proper um uh COVID code protocols in place for people to come in safely and attend these um, these council meetings. So I think I've answered most of your questions. Uh, Mayor Cross, if you could just answer the uh hiring of cable studio director, I think.
Also, the, uh, please, the, does the council know that the administration does not submit?
And, and, yeah, and.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's, that's the easy fix, we, we will work with the mayor to make sure that any resolutions does come from the legislation and not the administration, so I think that covers everything except for the director.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, yes, and thank you so much, Mayor Carter, yes, the, any resolution at the administration is at the request of the administration and is as delivered by the uh council. So we are all on sync with that, we all aware of that. Uh, as far as the Gold Room, the Gold Room is open, um, same as with the rest of the administration. Uh, council meetings downstairs on the council, whenever you're ready, the building is open. Uh, we can tape off our six feet, and we can make sure that our citizens are en masse. Uh, for hiring the cable studio, we put some significant amount of thought into this. And apparently, I guess there's still a potential legal uh considerations from the previous cable manager. Uh, but as soon as we uh follow through with the city attorney on where this is, the goal is, because our budget does have um finances that are eligible to be used in this capacity, the goal is, yes, to hire uh someone to help us run that cable station. Now, my expects, and unfortunately, I didn't get here in enough time to hire the media web master uh specialist, but I will tell you that we are actually actively rewriting that position description to incorporate more of all things media, uh, because the financiers that are attached to it really demands a little bit more than just, you know, the Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Uh, as far as the um signs for tonight's meeting, I can tell you, we'll follow up with that, because you're absolutely right, those should be out in a timely amount of, of, of manner. And um upon coming here, because you had very nice signs for the swearing in, at the same time, nice signs was requested for these boards. So I'll have to figure out why that hasn't happened, because it has been requested as of the nineteenth of August to replace the signage with something that's more concrete, uh primarily because these are standard meetings, as Council President has aligned, first Monday, second Monday, and the third. So with that, the goal is to have nice signs. Um, I think that answers all of your questions, and u- unless I missed something, ma'am.
No, that, that answers them all. Uh, but I would like to, I would just like to ask if, if, is, if Councilman Herring is satisfied with the fact that he is now going to be allowed to get the information that he requested last week?
Uh, Mr. President, may I?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, yes, I am um satisfied with, with that um information, you know, if I, if I get them. I do want to clear one thing, um, Ms. Councilwoman Jones made the assertion that there was identical info, identifying information on those ballots. So I got in touch with ELEC Techs, I just want the citizens to know. I got in touch with ELEC Tech, and they said there is no identical, identifiable information on those ballots, so you will not know. So no one would know who um, how the, how person voted, there's no identifiable information, so um, if citizens had that concern, that concern is no, not valid, I actually got an email from the companies telling me that. The ballots are completely anonymous, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Herring, one point of clarification, uh, Bonnie Duckworth is the point of contact for the Woodmore Community Center.
As well as the Gold Room.
As well as the Gold, in addition to Gold Room. Um, is it gonna be quick, uh, Councilman Freeks?
Uh, well, I wanted to mention about the public information request from Mr. um, from Councilman Herring. As I mentioned last week, it is allowable for him to receive the ballots. My concern is, I'm not certain that the council is authorized to vote and even say that he can or cannot receive them. I don't believe, I looked through our powers, I don't believe that's within our uh realm. I do believe that's part of the administration, when a public information request is submitted, it is submitted to the administration. And so I believe the administration should be facilitating that, I'm not certain what we would actually be voting on from a council perspective.
I, I a hundred percent agree, uh, I think the only thing that came up was the, the cost. Um, i- if, if the mayor can find it in the budget within the same line item to fund what it will cost to pull all of those ballots together, that's fine, we, we don't need to vote on it. What it will cost to pull all of those ballots together, define they we don't need to vote anything, but if if it does require us moving funds. Within the budget, then that's where we will come in. That's the only way we will come in.
And that makes sense.
Yeah.
And 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 I will say this, that it probably will require funding uh. Based on the fact that we're pulling eleven hundred ballots together. And we would have to scan all of those in, so we would have to pay on the hour.
Yeah, uh Ms. Mr. Harry, I just want you to be aware of that. So just um just asking for your patience as we. If that is the case, then we'll have to have a resolution uh resolution. Uh yeah, it's a resolution. I'll say revolution. Uh a resolution uh and go through that process of moving those funds unless it was an emergency. Um but uh okay.
Okay, I mean, I just I just want to say that just cost wise, I do know that you can run. Thirteen hundred thirteen hundred copies to those uh copying machines in an hour. And there's only eleven hundred ballots, so it shouldn't take no more than an hour to make copies of those others ballots, but whatever, whatever, whatever the figure is.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll let the administrative branch handle that because that is their responsibility. Yeah, if Mayor Cross is out, you know, encourage you, you know, if it if it is going to only take. An hour to make copies of those that you, you know, create the the appropriate budget and let us know if there uh is a vote needed to transfer. Calls. Um are we good, Councilwoman Free?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, uh Ms. Hunter.
Um so if there was someone else that was waiting that has not spoken before, they are more than welcome to go before me.
I do not see anyone else's hand up. Uh I just saw. Uh Christopher Stevenson.
Thank you so much, uh Mr. President, and and good to see you, Mayor, as well as the rest of the city council. It's always great. To be in my own uh meeting. I represent Legislative District Twenty Four and as you all know. I don't know why all the cities came together and have the meetings at the same time. Uh so my apologies on being tardy. Um I just had a very quick question and something that I wanted to put out there. Um. Uh and I and this question is directed to the president as well as the mayor. Uh either of you can answer it. If we do go back to in-person meetings, will we still have meetings via Zoom as well? Or will Zoom be an option for the meetings?
The the goal is to be able to broadcast Zoom, uh cable and in person. Um because we're, you know, just. People access things differently. I know when I had DirecTV, I did not have access to the cable channel. I didn't even know what channel on DirecTV it it was. Uh and with people now I'm off of DirecTV and I have a streaming service. I don't, I wouldn't even be gonna tell you where that. Where I can find it on a cable station. So I think we're working to have it. Or threefold, the cable, Zoom and in person. Uh it's unfortunate, though, with the cable option, those citizens that are uh at home watching it on the cable, they don't have the option to. Uh ask the questions right then and there, but they do have the option of sending their questions in beforehand. Uh so that we can have them uh and address them in the meeting.
Thank you so much, Council President. That was one of my concerns. I know we have a lot of uh senior citizens in the city. And most um actually do use Zoom and would prefer to um uh stay in place. And of course, we also have to worry about the covid variant, which we just don't know where that's going to go. Um but the second thing uh I wanted to tell you all is um as as most of you all know. Um I represent the city on the Democratic Central Committee, um and I discussed this for a little bit with the mayor. But um right now, we are currently looking into our District Twenty Four budget to see if we could possibly supplement. Some of the costs that um may come up with um the mayor's inaugural ball. Um I know I I was a little tardy to this meeting. My apologies again. I have a lot of different. Uh municipalities to attend meetings for, uh but I if that is still something that I can help with, I would be more than happy to help with. Um you know, it's it's for the betterment of the city and and I do believe that um if we are going to have this, then. Any help that we can get from the Central Committee to our state delegates, uh our senators and everyone else that um. Is a part of this city or represents the city should uh provide some help. So I just wanted to let. Uh you know, uh as well as the rest of the city council, so I yield my time back. Thank you so much.
Mayor Cross?
Yes, thank you so much. And you know what? Um. Mr. Stevenson, Christopher, thank you so much. That is very kind. In fact, we did have a quite lengthy discussion about the finances of. This event and uh as I explained to the council and the citizens, my intent is just to celebrate and have a good time with our citizens. I did mention that this is about a sixteen thousand dollar affair. And at which case, uh even if all the tickets were at the regular price of sixty-five, they're still under the required price, which should have been at seventy. So every ticket is already discounted at five dollars. Plus, we're also offering, you know, children at a even further deeper discounted rate, which ultimately brings. A uh deficit, if you will, um of less amount of money to cover all the costs. Just at about four thousand dollars short. So I did, you know, make the offer to the council. If it pleases the council to uh support the event, more than welcome. Um and thank you so much. To the uh Democratic um. Such a committee. Uh we do appreciate your support and um we thank you for that. Again, we're at a four thousand dollars. Uh short and we were just gonna pay it out of our pocket, but all things help. I appreciate you, sir.
Absolutely, Mayor. Whatever I can do to help you as well as the rest of the city council, I will always do so. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Uh Ms. Hunter?
Okay, good evening again. So um I know before my my question is regarding the beautification and Ward One. Along seven oh four. Um I know we have funding for it, but I want to know. Um how do we move forward? I mean, we people have presented some great ideas for beautification in the city. But what is the next step and what is the timeline for moving forward and um? It's like one area right outside of the A one um A one store. And it's just a bunch of overgrown bushes right there and. You know, like you ride into the city of Bowie or even in um Lincoln Heights, you can see where it's just beautiful landscape. And it's inviting, you know, whether or not we can do it to maybe spell out Glen Arden or, you know, just. Add a a brick retaining wall and and some plants and trees or do something to beautify that stretch of Glen Arden. It is has been untouched for so many years. Um so I know we have, I brought it up before. Others have brought it up, but wow, what's the timeline for us moving forward to? Um you know, we talk about it, put a plan in action and we get it done.
Oh, I love that. Uh may I, Council President?
Sure.
Uh thank you, Ms. Hunter, for that and not just in Ward One, but there is. Obviously beautification monies out there, sustainability plan monies that has been in the budget at least, you know, throughout the previous administration. And we are fortunate to have, you know, two more years of the sustainability uh budget as well. So I am. A hundred percent again, all about committees and people taking the lead and taking the action uh for us. Uh if if that's something that you would like to support us with, uh if it pleases the council, again. Uh we we are welcoming all citizens, you know, who would like to help us in these various capacities. To discover what we can do to beautify our city. I do know Ward One did receive some crepe myrtles down the Glen Arden Parkway, if I'm not mistaken, and that was part of the beautification. Uh plan uh monies uh that was put in by Mayor Estes. So uh some things have been done. Uh one of the things that I am looking at. Is uh right off of Glen Arden Parkway, there is a stretch of land and um I do know that it does take about an hour and a half to travel to city. Uh because I did with um the Department of Public Works travel to city. Uh but there's several stretches of lands where we can actually build uh community gardens. Uh we can also build uh pseudo walking paths with the nice uh foundation, if you will. And we can even build dog parks. So these are things that, again, citizens, your voice is so important to this administration. I want you to know that if I haven't said it a hundred times already in this meeting, it's so critical. We need every one of you. And your ideas to come to the table because there is funding, there is opportunities, but it does require someone taking the lead. Obviously, the administration is running the administration of the city. Uh so with that. Volunteers are critical. They're the lifeblood of getting things done. So uh I thank you and I thank again. Uh Councilwoman Smallwood for her volunteering for the Ethics Commission uh to be considered for that position. I mean, more of that. The more of that, spread the word to every citizen. The city of Glen Arden has new administration and we welcome your support. We can't do it without you. In fact, it's your city. We're just here helping to get things done and we work for you. So I thank you for that and I will be reaching out to you because I think. Uh you're on to something and and we do have the monies and we do have the plans. It requires grant writing, which is another reason why. We're pushing hard to get our city manager hired, uh because the city manager would kind of shepherd some of these grant writing processes. Uh and and oversight and with our ARP monies, uh the American Rescue Plan money. Uh we do have an option to hire persons to help us spend that money appropriately. So. Volunteer, put your name on the list. And I think a question was asked earlier about who you reach out to for for securing buildings. Um or reporting issues. Ms. Michelle Cheek is my administration um officer. Uh she is your central point of concerns. If a tree falls in the forest, you want to call Miss Cheek. Because she has actually created, and I'm gonna give her credit for her work. A Excel database that is structurally helping us put together metrics so that we can understand where our trouble spots are across the city. So little small baby steps here in administration, but volunteers are critical. Thank you for that. And then if you want to volunteer, make sure you let Miss Cheek know. She is actively creating a list of any and everyone that wants to support our city. It's your city. We're just here to help make things happen.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Um if you could, I don't know, provide her information in the chat or um send it, I will. Be more than glad to reach out to her. Um I'm a citizen and however I can help this city out, I'm I'm on board. Um there uh President, Councilman Derek, may I ask one more question?
Uh quickly, please.
Okay, I can um. I can, I can wait because I just forgot. I just forgot that quick. Um. Oh, no, 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 darn it. Oh, no, I I just want to make a comment. I will make it very quick. Um. I have m- my children are in sports um with the Glen Arden Boys and Girls Club and um. I am working very closely with the commissioner to make things happen um and bridging the gap between the schools and the. Community so they can act use the gym and stuff for practice or whatever. I am absolutely disgusted. With the amount of adults, young adults and parents. That are on the grounds when the children are out there playing their sports or cheerleading, that are out there smoking marijuana. That are out there drinking, that were out there, out there with their bottles and would just drop them down. It is absolutely sickening. There's never, and I'm not, I'm not ragging on the police because you know what, it uh anyone out there who sees it needs to say something and I am one that will say something. Of course, people say be careful saying something because somebody might pull a gun out of this and that. Well, you know, I'm prayed up, but this is our community. And I don't like it. Our children deserve to have a place that is rated G, no more than rated PG. And it's so unfair that I may have to go on, but I'm gonna stop because you said quick, but I am asking for someone to be. On board and in place. I've seen drug transactions right there in front of the kids. I've seen, I mean, just smoking weed just out like it's nothing. I don't, I I want no parts to that. You do what you want to do in your own time and the privacy of your own home or wherever. But not around these babies. So I am asking for assistance when these kids out there.
Is is this a particular area or?
It is the Glen, it's the Teresa Banks Recreation Center, our Glen Arden Recreation Center. And it is absolutely ridiculous, the things that go on there. And if there's anyone on here that they feel like I'm stepping on their toes, I look, I I'm. I grew up in Glen Arden and we had clean neighborhoods. We whoever was doing whatever they were doing, they didn't do it in front of the children. It it it's just a lack of respect. It's not safe. I mean, I've never sit there with my children out there and I see drug deals on. I took a picture of. I had their child attack. Went to football practice, had to walk past that. I can't be silent about it, but we need to do something about it. Garden is getting way too lax. I leave from like south on one of those streets, right down the street from the police precinct. It comes behind. That's all I have, Eric.
Thank you, uh Ms. Hunter. Um. I'm sorry. Chief Jackson, I saw you unmute yourself. Did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. When they having activities over there, they are supposed to have the park police. Over there to because they're the primary law enforcement agency for their prop because that's their property.
Thank you, sir. Didn't know that.
And you can also uh contact them with that information you have. Because they have uh, you know, not called, you say come, it's on, it's in plain clothes and they do go around and uh. You know, see what they can observe if they can make an arrest, you know.
That, okay.
Thank you, Chief Jackson. Um and citizens, apologize this going a little bit long, but I want to respect the last hand that. Uh saw raised and and then we'll adjourn. That was Carla, uh Ms. Carla Cash.
Oh, I just wanted to um say just like how um the Democratic Central Committee is watching. When you all wanted to change, you know, change the name on the inauguration, I think that would show kind of like not unity and separation. For people on the state level and the local level. So if there's any way that you can work to. Work it out for if you all for lack of transparency, as was stated, I think that would be better than redoing. Tickets and everything, not to include the cost that would be associated with it, but just so that. Now the mayor is in, we all should be working together to make Glen Arden, because it's not about her, it's about the city of Glen Arden. So that was just my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Cash. Appreciate that. I appreciate all the uh citizens who showed up tonight. Um. All of our meetings are important, this opportunity to learn what's going on in the city and make your voices heard at our um. Regular meetings and public hearings, so appreciate your attendance and appreciate your comments. Uh again, if you have not raised your question or you have any concerns, you can reach any other council members. Uh you can reach uh Mayor Cross and she has given her uh information as well. Um but we're here to serve our community uh and you know, and we're well on our way. So thank you, guys. Just want to check in with the council, see if there's any closing comments by everybody if if, you know, what I do every. Uh meeting to make sure that our uh councilmen are good to go. So Councilman Harry, any last comments?
No, I'm fine, thanks.
Thank you. Uh Councilman Guillaume?
No, thank you.
Councilman Hairston?
I'm fine, thank you.
Uh Councilman Jones?
Uh no, I'm good. Thank you.
Councilman Free?
Um yes, let me pull up my list. No. I don't, I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Uh Councilman Ferguson? Councilman Ferguson? I'm a guest that you said no. Okay, uh and again, thank you guys very much. I appreciate you guys. Um and our next meeting will be uh next Tuesday. Uh so uh that will go out and. Um uh on the sandwich boards. Uh Mayor Cross, if you could be really brief because I'm about to close the meeting.
Just make sure everyone.
Just make sure everyone looking in the chat, you have the emails for myself, Ms. Michelle Cheek, and you also have the phone number in which to reach Ms. Cheek for all volunteers that ask that question.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh and you guys have a good night. Ninety-one, this meeting is now adjourned.
Everybody have a good night. Awesome meeting.